We'll start with our pledge to the flag, and if I would have our female athletes lead us into the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We broke call. Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Here.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lopez Caneva?
Here. First, I want to publicly thank Mr. Dick Ives for chairing last month's meeting during my absence at last month's meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. No problem. I didn't get in too much trouble, so that's good.
Close session. We have none. Next, we have our resolutions recognizing the 50th anniversary of Title IX.
All right. I will come on up here and then have our coaches and our athletes. Just for the board, this fall represents the 50th anniversary of Title IX, which was landmark legislation in 1971, federal legislation. And Title IX opened the doors for many things, but what Title IX primarily opened the door to was female participation in sports. When I was in high school, three out of every 27 women were involved in sports. Today, 18 out of every 27 women in high school participate in sports. We have a proud tradition of women athletes and women coaches. And so what we hope to do tonight is really take some representative coaches who have made amazing contributions to our district, to our school, to our community, and some really amazing athletes. I'm even delighted that one of our athletes came straight from practice. So could I ask all of our female athletes to come on up? And if there are female coaches could join them. We're going to see the resolution all at one time. We have all these fine women, a big one of them. Just go ahead. We just go straight across and we'll give in there for a picture. And hey, if you, I'm going to read off the resolution, but if you could just, for the board, if you could just tell your name, what you coached, or what athletics you participated in.
Linda Sezega, girls' bowling coach. Stacy Sparland, I played tennis in college. I coached tennis in Bannan year.
Jenny Cromlinde, and I coached a competitive cheer team.
Ashley Leeny, and I'm on the cheer team.
Elizabeth Souchacki, and I played basketball and lacrosse.
Amelia Drusnik, and I play tennis.
Elizabeth Anderson, I play ball.
All right. We're going to read this resolution. It's about you. Whereas Title IX of the Educational Amendments Act of 1972, signed by President Richard Nixon, is a federal law that states no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Whereas by prohibiting schools from teaching students differently on the basis of sex, Title IX allows both men and women to equally take advantage of any course of study regardless of gender stereotypes about traditional male or female coursework or professions. In the years since Title IX has passed, women can now sign up for plumbing, welding, engineering, and males can sign up for nursing, teaching, and other classes that were restricted prior to Title IX. Title IX is most famous for its impact on expanding opportunities for women and girls in sports. It gives women athletes the right to compete equally. Whereas female athletes Elizabeth Anderson, Christian Bowie, Amelia Jersey, Demetra Kantos, and Ashley Leeny, and Elizabeth Souchacki have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by demonstrating their pride and commitment to their sports, teammates, and coaches. Whereas female coaches Marissa Shavannik, Jennifer Cromlinde, Linda Sezega, and Stacy Sparland have aided and guided in the achievements of female athletes and have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, community, and school. Now therefore be it resolved on this 15th day of November 2021 by the Board of Educational Lockport Township High School District 205 that the 50th anniversary of Title IX is hereby recognized as a landmark legislation that bans sex discrimination in any educational system. And as you vote, I will hand out the resolution. But also just mentioning that all of these fine women were recommended by their peer coaches, by the athletic director, Mike Dwyer, by our two principals as an outstanding representation because behind them stand hundreds of women coaches who have served in Lockport Township High School, and thousands of women athletes who have competed here like Dr. Shaw, who competed in swimming and softball. Swimming and softball. So you want to go ahead and take the votes?
Yes, make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, so the motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah, let's give these female athletes a round of applause. Can Francesca, Javi, yeah, you can bring some chairs up kind of close. Thanks so much.
All right, so the first thing we have, we have a couple of things that we want to talk about today, but the first thing is our late start Wednesdays that we started doing this year. And overall, it's a renowned success among all of our students. We all like the extra chance to get some more rest or get up in the morning and finish some homework or get more productive and a nice start of the day. And our student leadership group at East has begun to capitalize on the good feelings and the positive vibes, for lack of a better word, on campus with dress-up days on Wednesdays. And we're going to start this Wednesday with a neon dress-up day. So we're hoping for a lot of student participation in that.
Yeah, overall, our student consensus on the Wednesdays is that it's like very positive. It's impacted all of us in a really like important way. Especially because of the shift, it's caused a lot of teachers to push testing to Thursday. Instead, Wednesday is usually a pretty popular testing day, but now it's on Thursdays, so we have more time to study in the mornings because of that late start. But as a flip side to that, there is no Compass on Wednesdays, so we aren't able to see our teachers on that day like through the study hall. So that's like pretty much been the only downside to having those Wednesdays, but it's been really positively received in the student body. And then our next thing, Charlie, do you want to?
Yeah, it's Compass.
Okay, yeah. Anna, you got it?
So recently, they added that we could sign ourselves up for Compass, which is very favored in the student body because we used to have to like have a mini-meeting with our teachers before we could schedule for Compass to talk about them scheduling us, but it's very efficient to be able to do it ourselves. And it's super easy to do too. The only downside to that is that the registration to sign up for Compass is, I think, the night before, the next day. But sometimes you need the extra like two periods to make sure like what class you want to go to. So the only thing with that is to maybe, I don't know if it's possible to push the deadline a little farther so we have a little more time to see because we don't always know what classes we want to see the next day yet.
Yeah, the 24-hour period is a little bit frustrating just because a lot of times you don't know like which teacher you need to see, especially like I have a calc test and a bio test this week, so I have to choose between them to pick which Compass period I have to go to. But other than that, like we are very, very grateful for the Compass system, and we are very aware that there will be bugs with it, but I think overall it's a very like successful program. So thank you for that. And then our last thing on the agenda, Javi and I this week, or last week, attended a leadership, or Charlie, you did too. We all attended a leadership program that has been going on. I've been attending since my freshman year with Phil Boyd. Yeah, he's amazing. It was really awesome to be able to work through that, and you feel so much better afterwards. And I think just being able to pull those kids from different areas in the school is just awesome. We're able to learn a lot of like new leadership school or skills, and I think it's going to create a really positive impact on our school because it was very well received for the kids who did attend.
Adding on to what Fran said, it allows us to talk to other people we normally might not. And I think it just overall connects all like four pillars of like all different types of people together throughout our school.
It's a really great program. I love Phil Boyd. He's a fantastic speaker, and he does a great job of making these connections among students that wouldn't ordinarily happen. And this year, we focused a lot on emotional maturity, so knowing how to, you may, these are kids that have awareness and emotional awareness, and this is applying it. So we learned conversational skills, and we did an activity where we could see a lot of the things that people wouldn't normally talk about, struggles at home and stuff like that. And that helped to make us aware of stuff that was going on, not only in the leadership community, but also outside of that, because if you can see, oh wow, if this is happening in the community of leaders in the school, you can only imagine how prevalent it is outside of that classroom.
Yeah, and I think on top of that, especially with COVID, like we were able to get our freshmen in there as well, so being able to kind of make that connection sooner with just bringing them into like what it is to be a porter and how you're supposed to act around the school and the type of culture that we want to promote, like that type of thing was really, really helpful for us, especially pulling like the most
Is a federal law that states no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Whereas by prohibiting schools from teaching students differently on the basis of sex, Title IX allows both men and women to equally take advantage of any course of study regardless of gender stereotypes about traditional male or female coursework or professions. In the years since Title IX has passed, women can now sign up for plumbing, welding, engineering, and males can sign up for nursing, teaching, and other classes that were restricted prior to Title IX. Title IX is most famous for its impact on expanding opportunities for women and girls in sports. It gives women athletes the right to compete equally. Whereas female athletes Elizabeth Anderson, Christian Bowie, Amelia Jersey, Dimitri Kantos, and Ashley Leeny and Elizabeth Souchacki have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by demonstrating their pride and commitment to their sports, teammates, and coaches. Whereas female coaches Marissa Shavannick, Jennifer Crumlinde, Linda Seizega, and Stacy Sparland have aided and guided in the achievements of female athletes and have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, community, and school. Now therefore be it resolved on this fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-one by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District two oh five that the fiftieth anniversary of Title IX is hereby recognized as a landmark legislation that bans sex discrimination in any educational system. And as you vote, I will hand out the resolution. But also just mentioning that all of these fine women were recommended by their peer coaches, by the athletic director Mike Dwyer, by our two principals as an outstanding representation because behind them stand hundreds of women coaches who have served in Lockport Township High School and thousands of women athletes who have competed here like Dr. Shaw who competed in.
Swimming and softball.
Swimming and softball. So you want to go ahead and take the votes?
Yes, make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, so the motion's second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah, let's give you. Can we fit?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And thank you.
And I was remiss, Mrs. Lopez Caniva, could we give a big round of applause to the parents?
I was just gonna do that.
Thanks so much.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you again. And congratulations to all our female athletes and to our female coaches who you have really brought such honor and distinction here to our community, to our school, and we are very, very proud of you. All right? We're going to be continuing with our business now, our board meeting business. You are, you're welcome to stay or you're excused.
Very exciting.
Okay, next we have our student, student reports.
Can Francesca and Javi, yeah, you can, you can bring some chairs up kind of close. Thanks so much.
All right. So the first thing we have, we have a couple of things that we want to talk about today, but the first thing is our late start Wednesdays that we started doing this year. And overall, it's a renowned success among all of our students. We all like the the extra chance to get some more rest or get up in the morning and finish some homework or get more productive and a nice start of the day. And our student leadership group at East has begun to capitalize on the good feelings and the positive vibes, for lack of a better word, on campus with dress up days on, on Wednesdays. And we're going to start this Wednesday with a neon dress up day. So we're hoping for a lot of student participation in that.
Yeah, overall, our student consensus on the Wednesdays is that it's like very positive. It's impacted all of us in a really like important way, especially because, because of the shift, it's caused a lot of teachers to push testing to Thursday. Instead, Wednesday is usually a pretty popular testing day, but now it's on Thursdays, so we have more time to study in the mornings because of that late start. But as a flip side to that, there is no Compass on Wednesdays, so we aren't able to see our teachers on that day like through the study hall. So that's like pretty much been the only downside to having those Wednesdays, but it's been really positively received in the student body. So. And then our next thing, Charlie, do you want to?
Yeah, it's Compass.
Okay, yeah. Anna, you got it?
Um, so recently they added that we could sign ourselves up for Compass, which is very favored in the student body because we used to have to like have a mini meeting with our teachers before we could schedule for Compass to talk about them scheduling us, but it's very efficient to be able to do it ourselves. And it's super easy to do too. The only downside to that is that the registration to sign up for Compass is, I think, the night before, the next day. But sometimes you need the extra like two periods to make sure like what class you want to go to. So the only thing with that is to maybe, I don't know if it's possible to push the deadline a little farther, so we have a little more time to see because we don't always know what classes we want to see the next day yet.
Yeah, the twenty-four hour period is a little bit frustrating just because a lot of times you don't know like which teacher you need to see, especially like I have a calc test and a bio test this week, so I have to choose between them to pick which Compass period I have to go to. But other than that, like we are very, very grateful for the Compass system and we are very aware that there will be bugs with it. But I think overall it's a very like successful program. So thank you for that. And then our last thing on the agenda, Javi and I this week, or last week, attended a leadership, or Charlie, you did too. We all attended a leadership program that has been going on. I've been attending since my freshman year with Phil Boyd. Yeah, he's, he's amazing. It was really awesome to be able to work through that and you feel so much better afterwards. And I think just being able to pull those kids from different areas in the school is just awesome. We're able to learn a lot of like new leadership school or skills, and I think it's going to create a really positive impact on our school because it was very well received for the kids who did attend.
Adding on to what Fran said, it allows us to talk to other people we normally might not. And I think it just overall connects all like four pillars of like all different types of people together throughout our school.
Yeah, it's a really great, a really great program. I love Phil Boyd. He's a fantastic speaker and he does a great job of making these connections among students that wouldn't ordinarily happen. And this year we focused a lot on emotional maturity. So knowing how to, you may, these are kids that have awareness and emotional awareness, and this is applying it. So we learned conversational skills and we did an activity where we could see a lot of the things that people wouldn't normally talk about, struggles at home and stuff like that. And that helped to make aware, make us aware of stuff that was going on, not only in the leadership community, but also outside of that. Because if you can see, oh wow, if this is happening and the community of leaders in the school, you can only imagine how prevalent it is outside of that classroom.
Yeah, and I think on top of that, especially with COVID, like we were able to get our freshmen in there as well. So being able to kind of make that connection sooner with just bringing them into like what it is to be a porter and how you're supposed to act around the school and the type of culture that we want to promote, like that type of thing was really, really helpful for us, especially pulling like the most prevalent leaders in the school from all different communities. Like it was awesome. So thank you guys for that. I think that's all we have update wise. So do you have any questions for us?
No, I guess you were very thorough. No, but thank you.
One of the things I do want just to comment on, of course, I like how you get feedback from other students and bring that to the meeting. I think that's very helpful for us. So I thank you for that. Sometimes that's not the easiest thing to do, you know, they don't want to talk about it. So I do thank you for that because I think that's very helpful to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, you guys. Have a good Thanksgiving.
AFT report, Ms. Karen Cooper. Honestly, things are going well. And it's a, of course, it's a great day to be a porter. There's a lot of good stuff going on, a lot of celebrations, our students and amazing things and the staff supporting them. And as a group, we've really just been focusing on helping. And so we have been trying to help our membership understand all of the great benefits of being members. And we are kind of training them in scholarships and online college that's free and services that are free. So we've really been trying to reach out to people to support them. We've been trying to reach out to and just do some fun things to turkey raffles. And we're kind of gathering, you know, just it's something we used to do here and we kind of brought it back, just, just some fun stuff. And you know, just it's the giving season, so donations to some of the local charities and food banks and some things like that. And I just want to say that I also appreciate and am thankful for the opportunities that we have to engage with administration. And so we've had steering committee meetings, different scheduling committee, this week Para meets. And so I really appreciate the opportunity for, to share perspective. And it has really turned out to be a positive relationship. So look forward to many more opportunities. Past that, I think we're in a good place. I think people are exhausted, but I think rightfully so. And we have some days off that are just placed in just the right spot. So, yeah, that's about it. Thank you. Next we have the IASB governing board report.
Everybody should have their packet to go to the triple I. If there's something that's quite right, see Kathy. And if you run into issues, that's what I typically try to go early enough so that she's around. I, you know, you can call and she'll straighten it out. Because I have had times where things didn't quite make it through, because she takes care of it. So that's what's going on. And the next thing that will be coming up will be the National School Board Association. And that'll be in San Diego. And I heard that it's supposed to be both, both virtual and in person. So we're working to see is that true and how it's going to work. So stay tuned.
And then, Belan, did you want us to give you the, our ballots?
Say again?
The ballots?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I gave you mine.
Yeah, I got two of them.
Okay.
Everybody receive their resolution packet in the mail and some information about the resolutions. So I would appreciate if you fill out your ballots and turn them in to me. And I go on the twentieth and vote based on what the board has. I'll tabulate everything and whatever the majority is, is how I vote. Any questions on any of these?
We do have blank ones if, if any of you.
Say again?
We have blank ones. Kathy has a blank one over here. She has blank ones.
Oh, if you need a blank.
If you need one, yes.
Were there any questions on any particular resolution? Did you want to speak to anyone in particular, Dr. Redburn?
You know, not really. I, you know, I gave, you know, a pretty detailed rundown of the resolutions. A few that I, you know, just, just for your interest that I would highlight, there are some that I would recommend you support, recommend you not support. One is learning to teach reading. And that might strike you strange for people in college to be required by the state to take a class, particularly in reading. But even at the high school level, we are teachers of reading. And so this would add to college preparation of the expectation to get a license. You would have to take a particular class in how to teach people how to read in your content area. Resolution two continues to be a controversial resolution in the state, and that is a downstate Southern Illinois resolution about allowing certain individuals to qualify to carry firearms in schools that might not have access to a school resource officer. I, I would, you know, caution the board to be very cautious about that. My experience has been that even the most trained professionals with firearms in certain school situations might, might be tested. And, you know, weaponizing people who are not training on a regular basis is a professional job. I would, I would caution support for that. There are others, you know, board member childcare during board meetings. I think that gets people to, to run for election. There is great leeway for online meetings. Another one that was of interest to me was giving boards more time to reorganize. Currently it's twenty-eight days. It would give maximum forty days. So those were the, the resolutions, I thought, that, that stood out the most. And I can answer any questions about that that you might have.
The one about allowing teachers to carry guns was very controversial last year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, very, in fact, people were picketing outside of the, the height over that particular one.
Yeah, pro and con.
Yeah, and it made the news. So when they took comments on it, there was at least fifteen for, four and fifteen against, you know, adopting that resolution. So this year it's come back with a modification to it. So anyway.
That's all I have on this. Thank you. All right. Foundation board report.
Yeah, the foundation for its activities has been a little quiet, a lot to do with COVID and a lot of, and we don't, going through restructuring. I don't know if I can steal Bob's thunder.
Do it.
Okay, I will. Sitting over here with the, in the corner is someone that everybody knows pretty well. I'm pleased to announce that Angela Adolf has accepted the position of Director of the Foundation and Development. We're expanding the role of the, of the area. I know Bob will be talking about her soon, so we welcome her on, with open arms because she'll, she'll have the energy that the foundation really needs. So we're looking forward to that. So now that she's getting things going, then we'll become a little more proactive. And I think the first thing is lunch with Santa, isn't it?
Yes, December fifth.
December fifth. Absolutely.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. Curriculum meeting report.
We met and on November the first was Veronica, myself, Ms.,
Krista Farrow. I know, I have all my lessons.
You know, yes. Yes, and Dr. Huntington and Ms. Tammy Gallagher, the AP teacher. Yeah. So we had a good discussion. Mr. Travis is on there, but he was, I guess he got tied up. He said he got tied up in traffic. So we'll try to accommodate him the next time. We did set future meeting dates, so we'll have to get them out early for people. But we talked about, Ms. Gallagher was there because she went through AP. She talked about AP, how it works, and, you know, the students, you know. Because I know in some report it said that some take the class but don't take the test. And she explained that sometime they don't take the test because whatever institution they're going to may not, they might not need it. Okay. That was the main reason why they didn't take the test. So we talked about freshmen on track. And we got, I got, I got a good understanding about that. And I would say because I, I did a lot of talking. And for freshmen to be on track is they had to be enrolled in at least five core classes, which some of the core courses are English, math, science, and social studies, with no more than one semester F to be considered on track. And it is projected that if that takes place, then they're more, four times more likely to graduate from high school. Currently, we have twenty, as of October the fifth, we have twenty-six students in the freshman class that were not on track. So which is only three percent of the, of the total enrollment. So. And those kids are being given extra help to get them on track. And we did talk a little bit about career and college readiness and some of the things, what, what that entails, the classes have to take and what the state requires. We, seemed like the time went fast.
We talked about the new course proposals too.
Oh, yes, but I'm not going to cover that because it's going to come up later in the agenda. Yeah. The new courses, we discussed those. Yeah, that'll come up later on the agenda today. So. But, yeah, we covered a lot and the time went by fast, so we probably could have used another hour. But.
It's a lot too.
It was a lot, yes. So. And we covered the stuff that was in, a lot that was in this book that we got last month. So we'll probably cover some more of this, you know, as we go along to understand it. So, anyway, so that's my report. Veronica, you want to add something?
No, I think you got it all.
So, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, one other thing I want to add.
Sure.
Uh, Dr. Huntington gave an excellent report about the, the kids that are in special ed and how they're doing. They're doing good. And that Lockport is one of the few schools that, that is, what does it say?
I believe it was the DRS report.
Huh?
It was the DRS report that you were talking about.
You want to talk about that, what that was?
Oh, gosh. You're putting me on the spot. I didn't write anything down. No, the DRS report that our students are successfully being placed when they graduate or when they leave us, we have more students that are being placed in a, in a, a career than any other school. So, yeah. Was that right, Dr. Huntington? Okay, just checking.
Now we're done.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, then we have our finance and facility meeting report. Mr. Ives.
Yes, that's me. Yes, we also met last week. We had our first committee meeting. The committee consists of, from the board, myself, Ms. Lopez Caniva, and Mr. Navara. And on behalf of the facilities, I know we're shocked that it's Bill Thompson, and Stephanie Croy does the finances. And one of the things that as board members that we have the advantage of for this committee meetings is the detail that we had, we're informed of during our monthly meetings about facilities and finances. So this is more of a overview discussion committee that we have where like, you know, we're not there to go through every budget item where we'd still be there if we were doing that. We were, you know, we were given the copy, you know, of the, you know, fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-two budget. But what I thought was great for us as committee members is Stephanie did a very good job of talking about not what the numbers are, but where it comes from, how it comes, how these numbers are made up, what it takes to get to the certain point, how do we get the, the financial resources to run this school, which is substantial. But also there's the forecasting that goes into it and also looking at projections, always changing, right, Stephanie? And about what, you know, what's, what's coming ahead? What's the state doing? Are they going to add, you know, add, is there additional money to get? Is there grant money to get? So, you know, we did a good overview as well as the fine facilities that we have here. Mr. Thompson presented or provided a report to us, so we went through that. We have, we did set up our calendar. We're going, you know, meet quarterly starting in January. The holidays and something like, moving those dates around already. But we do want to meet on a quarterly basis. So if any board members have any issues that come up, hey, I got a question about this, or if there's possibly something that is presented at a board meeting, you want further detail by, just let us know. We can, we can get that over to you. You know, but in addition there, Danya Pryor was there as well from Stephanie's department. She, she helped us and she was, she was there as well. So it was, you're right, we went over our hour. We cheated. We went a little longer, but I think we'll be, you know, more on, on point and with the agenda and topics for next time because Stephanie was wide open and said with Bill about, you know, whatever we want to talk about, let's talk about it. So it was very good.
Very good. Very informative. Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie, for all that. Okay. All right. Next is we have our legislative report.
Legislative report, always busy in Springfield. Not something I included in my report, but I've had an opportunity in the past about week or so to talk to a number of officials from Springfield. I know one of the things that the state is looking at, and I think a good thing to look at is sort of can we make a sort of COVID nineteen finish line? You know, right now, we, we sort of live under a number of executive orders and guidelines. But what does sort of done or progression look like? The board on August second, you approved a progressive plan that set up some guideposts. And I know that the state is looking at those types of plans to see if it could mirror something. So policymakers are doing that. Probably the most important thing, I spent quite a bit of time talking to our state senators and state of Illinois representatives about HB two seven seven eight, which did pass. And what this does, and we're looking to sort it out, Mr. Kandari in his office. But it, it passed both the House and the Senate and establishes unlimited administrative leave days for COVID-related illnesses, issues that is retroactive to the beginning of the school day. Presently, in our work with the, the union, our union and, and Mrs. Cooper, folks who would be including, you know, administrators, really anybody in the district who would have a COVID-related illness, a close contact, a COVID positive, taking care of a, a child exposed to COVID at home, those would be part of our sick days. What HB two seven seven eight does is it creates those as administrative leave days, so would not be charged to an individual's sick account. So that's a, quite a bit of a change where we started. It, this, this bill supersedes any collective bargaining that we did, for example, with our union or any kind of memory and understanding that we have in place. So just updating the board on that, and Mr. Kandari's working on it. Yeah, Mr. Zindivar.
So if that's, so if someone had to be in quarantine, that counted as their own personal sick days?
It did. Mm-hmm. But that's no longer the case now. HB one nine seven five essay is face law. This was actually a law that we supported, and I spoke to legislators on this as well. This passed both houses. It directs schools to indicate on website supports we provide for victims, particularly of sexual abuse. So something that Mrs. Wheeler and I will be working on. But I think most importantly, it, it adds into state school code grooming. And having been as a, as a high school principal involved in situations inappropriate adult grooming of, of young people, I'm glad to see this because that can be as damaging a, as any of this, in this arena. So very, very important law that passed. And then also ISBE update, the school board announced on October twenty-second something that Mrs. Cooper referenced. A little late in the game, we are well into it with our evaluation process. Dr. Green and Dr. Greenin and Mr. Kandari leading ahead with our evaluation process. In the past two years, there were the ability for teachers, depending on their rating, if they're proficient or excellent, not to go if they were tenured through the full formal process, really more last year than the year before. And on October twenty-second, we learned that we would be able to do that again this year, which would be excuse proficient and excellent tenured teachers from that rating process. So we have a committee that's set up for. So we have a committee that's set up for that, that's the Performance Education Reform Act Committee, uh, which was enacted in two thousand twelve. They'll be talking about that and working that out, because we also have another opportunity where, right now, our tenured teachers are evaluated every two years. On a separate law that was enacted over the summer, we could move to that evaluation being once within every three years. So looking at both of those, um, right now as they lay out next to each other. Any questions? That's what's happening in Springfield.
Thank you, all right. Okay, all right, communications, I, I don't see any, so we have no communications. Freedom of information request, you have there in your packet. Next, we have public comments on agenda topics. All right, a designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district expects mutual respectability and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy two colon two three oh and Policy eight colon three oh. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year, and we have none. All right, next, we have our approval items, next we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes, I just need a motion for that.
Some move?
Sorry.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by, was it Mr. Ives?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? Okay, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
At stake. All right, next we have, we, we don't have any closed session meeting minutes, so we don't have any motion for that. Next, we have the approval of the board member expenses. Need a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions to those expenses? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of the treasurer's report for October twenty twenty-one.
Some move, sorry.
Been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those treasurer's reports or those financial documents? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Let's see, now our superintendent update.
All right, um, thank you for acknowledging Title IX, I, I think that's just so, so important. And November is usually a month that's reserved to acknowledge, uh, two groups, I, I, I think of people that really, really uphold what we're trying to do as a democracy and a republic. The first are veterans, uh, Veterans Day, uh, was on Thursday, November eleventh, last week, and, uh, we did a number of things to acknowledge veterans, and we really tried to keep it sort of the, the Lockport family. We wanted to share as an educational piece with students that you have veterans walking the hallways, just, just right here with you. Did a number of things, we raised one thousand two hundred dollars for Caring Patriots, and one of our district office, um, uh, staff members, Dana Pryor, she really led that, and Caring Patriots provides food, um, for, uh, veterans that are experiencing food scarcity or in need. And then also, uh, Eric Slager, Janine Wheeler, and Deanna Greggich put together a fabulous video that highlighted the service, um, in particular of, uh, one of the paraprofessionals in the CCC, Jim Malbranch, who started out his career in the, uh, very important Hundred First Airborne, um, and then one, uh, Sergeant Janine Wheeler, um, who was a veteran of the United States Army, uh, and really highlighted their, their service. We thought it was important for everyone to see both, uh, a male and, and a female, and highlighting all the possibilities, and, and really to define words like duty and, and, and honor and commitment and sacrifice. At the end of that video, we ran, uh, photographs of just all of the staff members that we knew that, um, are, are veterans. Is there anybody in the room who's a veteran?
Thank you.
Just Janine.
Janine, yeah, we know Janine, yep, so thank, we give Janine a big round of applause. And, and, you know, I think when we live in a population where only one percent of our, our, you know, fellow citizens these days serve, it is so important for us to really help illuminate what our armed forces do. So we don't forget the, the sacrifice and, and what they, what they, they sometimes face. Uh, it's also National School Board Month, and, uh, we have a little token from our administrative team for you, just a little bit of, uh, LTHS Porter, a pride store, uh, swag for you, please check the size, we hope you wear it with pride, just a small token of appreciation. But I really would like to, uh, acknowledge our president, Ann Lopez Caneva, our vice president, Dick Ives, secretary Veronica Shaw, members Michael Travis, uh, Zaya Navara, uh, Michael Lewandowski, and, uh, Luann Johnson. Little known, you know, one of the institutions left in the United States where you aren't, you are not paid, you are purely volunteers, you are peers from the community, who, who, who govern, um, a, a large school district that influences four thousand students and almost six hundred, uh, employees. And, and that's a huge job, and, and many people don't know how much you have to prepare and the decisions that are on your plate, but I think it's one way that we keep our democracy, uh, going. Uh, Mr. Matt Dusterhoff, who's on our, uh, staff, is a board member. I don't know if I'm missing anyone, is there anybody else in here who's a school board member, somewhere? But can we give these school board members a big round of applause for their service? And, and, and then also, I almost did a dissertation on this, I did it on mathematics education, but November also should be called National Teacher Fatigue Month. If you look at all the research, the most amount of sick days, the most amount of absences, the most surveys for fatigue that, um, teachers report are in the month of November. Now you might think that it's because, um, they've been working since August, September, October, it all adds up, right? I actually think, you know, here at Lockport Township High School, you put those, you know, Thanksgiving break in there, and it used to be Veterans Day, I think, you know, a lot of our teachers think, I need to still get a month's worth in here. And that's a hard job, especially hard, uh, these days with some of the things we're doing. So, um, really echo, uh, what Mrs. Cooper said, we can really tell how hard all of our staff are working, just, it's that time of year where, where we need to have a break. Finally, uh, this is a time we, at our board retreat, talked about me giving a brief update on my superintendent goals, and of course, this is not intended to be five presentations in five minutes, um, you know, I'll do those presentations, but I really just wanna remind you and the public what you've asked me to work on. Of course, first and foremost is student achievement. Last month, we really walked through, um, how we performed last year, and I think the news is very good, both in terms of SAT and grades, there's just a lot to celebrate, graduation rate, lots to celebrate. But I think what it really comes back to is the mission that we have is, what Mrs. Johnson, uh, mentioned, is excellence truly is, can we reach out to those twenty-six students who are not on track? Can we find ways to connect more students to science? Can we find ways to support our teachers, uh, with scheduling, with class size, so that we really reach out to every student who might not, not achieve? Right next to that goes college and career readiness, and, and what I hope to do is in April, give you a little bit of sense of college and career readiness, but, um, we'll be presenting at the triple I conference on our work to give you a dashboard and our whole, uh, school a dashboard of seeing if students are making both the state and their own college and career readiness benchmarks. Uh, last week, I had a meeting, we're really trying to forge, uh, somewhat mighty and one-of-a-kind partnership between the United Way of Will County, Lewis University, and Julia Junior College, and then industry partners, that United Way is helping us, uh, identify. Just think about it, um, way up in school district two fourteen, they partner with Lewis for aviation mechanics. And Lewis is right in our backyard and ready to set up for our students high-tech, high-paying experiences, where United, American, Southwest are just hiring students as soon as they can in that, that very high-tech field. So, very exciting. Uh, goal three, safety, I really have to commend, uh, Matt Bartley and Trish Sermon and Jotan Matlock, they ran an outstanding, you know, and Matt Bartley really on the lead and the lead presenter, outstanding, um, safety, uh, meeting, where we pulled together all of our, uh, public safety officials from all the communities that we serve, all of our public safety people here on all of our campuses, really everybody who's involved in that. Uh, we praised the things that we're doing well, we looked at the things we, we need to improve. One of the things we're looking to look at is our, um, building evacuation plan, and make sure that we have a really tight building evacuation and reunification plan, uh, and restorative practices, continuing to grow and, and build those. Hopefully, coming to you in January to tell you a little bit more about safety. Goal four, uh, continuing, you know, just, uh, goal four is community engagement. And we continue through, uh, Mrs. Wheeler's office to really reach out, uh, to our public. We have a, a very important hire that we'll talk about in, uh, just a few moments, I'll, um, give a shout out to two administrators that we're about to hire. Uh, but tools, easy-to-use tools, um, Parents Square, brand-new tool. Uh, we had a little bit of a, a scare online a couple, uh, about weeks ago, where, um, someone had posted on Snapchat a threat that they were making to a central high school. Of course, people in our area who saw that reposted thought of our central, but of course, they thought of that at Naperville Central, Plainfield Central, and indeed, this Snapchat post came out of Missouri. Um, but with Parents Square, I was standing in the Northwoods of Wisconsin and talked to Dr. Green and was able with my phone, just to get that out to our community and calm people's nerves. Uh, so those kind of tools really help. Also, we just launched our, uh, LTHS Protect Our Porters, it has, since it was launched, over four hundred, uh, visits. It is replacing, um, a tool that we currently have called Let's Talk with something called Crisis Go. Quicker, faster, better app to use for people to report bullying and harassment. So really pleased with that, and I'd like to, in March is generally when we've talked about public relations, uh, with the board. And then on goal five, our district financial profile, you have asked me to work with Stephanie Croy to make sure that we have at least six to twelve months of cash on hand, so that we're insulated, uh, from all of the things that, that can happen from COVID to inflation. We actually do that report to you monthly, the treasurer's report. Uh, some months when we are in a tax collection season, like in the spring or in the fall, we're, we're closer to twelve months, but we don't dip below six months, and really what that's all about is the general frugality and conservative approach towards money, um, across our campuses, from department chairs to administrators, uh, just like you as a board, we're thinking in a conservative way. So that's really a monthly piece that we report to you. So I think, and you know, any, any, any questions or any, any, anything about my goals, the work that we're doing? Do not want to, um, you know, these are presentations I'll be giving you all year, but just wanna preview what we're working on right now.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Uh, the one that you was talking about with the cash flow?
With, I'm sorry, what?
The cash flow.
Got it.
That we don't get down? Uh, I know the, uh, county, uh, board went to four payments a year. So how has that impacted our cash flow, or is that gonna come up later?
It, you know, Mrs. Croy can speak to it more specifically, but it, it has not had the impact that we thought it would have. Our cash flow has been steady, our receipts have been steady, um, you know, we, for the public, we provide that in the financial report, so any members of the public or anyone who's watching livestream, you can really see that in, in, uh, the treasurer's report and the financial reports, our, our collections have not dimmed. And it's interesting, our collections, whether we were in COVID or we were, you know, in four pays, we, we have not dimmed. We do have a nice base of tax payments that are probably related to banks that have mortgages that automatically pay homeowners, uh, taxes, uh, but, but that's not every taxpayer, uh, that sets their finances up. Anything you, you want to add, Mrs. Croy?
The only thing I think I would like to add is, um, with four payments, you would expect it to be twenty-five percent each time, right? But as Dr. McBride pointed out, um, due to primarily taxpayers that escrow, right, that escrow their taxes, those payments all come pretty much right away.
So the bank, the, the, the way they were paying, okay.
So normally, what would happen, under the two-payment system, we would receive approximately fifty percent of the taxes in the first fiscal year in the spring, right, by June third, yes. Um, and then the other fifty percent approximately in the fall. Because three of the four dates, when they set up the dates, are actually in the next fiscal year, we were a little unsure whether we were gonna only get up to twenty-five percent, but we ended up getting forty-five percent. So it's just a little bit less than under the two-payment system. So it was not significant enough to really impact our cash flow a lot.
And what helps with maintaining that six to twelve months of cash on hand, we could manage that unevenness. You know, we're not living, you know, we, we've set our savings up, you know, this is very crude, we've set our finances up so that we're not living paycheck to paycheck, so to speak, which, which insulates everyone, um, from going up and down based on, on tax receipts. And then finally, two final announcements, um, uh, board members did give feedback that, that they would prefer a December thirteenth board meeting. Last year, it turned out when we met in, uh, the week before Christmas, we had some board member conflicts and some people, uh, who could not make the meeting, so we are moving the December board meeting Monday, December thirteenth. And then also, in a few minutes after we do the consent agenda, it's delight to introduce you to Angela Adolf, who will be our LTHS Foundation Director and Development, and then also, Jeanette Castillo, who's with us tonight, who will be our new Public Relations Director, so we'll, we'll properly, I'll properly introduce them to you, uh, in a moment. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. Okay, next we have a consent agenda items from, um, number two to number eight, just need a motion for that.
Some of, uh, well, I move to approve the consent agenda items to the rate it is written.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Ives, are there any questions to those consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, next we have the action consideration appointments for Director of Public Relations, just need a motion for that.
Right, can I introduce, uh, do a little, little introduction, um, of Jeanette Castillo? That means you have to stand up, Mrs. Castillo, uh, so we wanna check in with you. We were, we were very lucky, um, to see Jeanette a, a number of times, and, uh, we actually first saw Jeanette, um, when she interviewed for the position that we'll appoint, uh, Mrs. Adolf. And when she walked out of the room, the team of about five administrators said, she'd make a great Public Relations Director. Uh, a, a, a few things about, uh, Jeanette, she's bilingual, Emmy award-winning journalist. Prior to LTHS administrative team, she served as graduate recruiter at Saint Xavier University. She has been involved in broadcast journal, journalism, serving on a number of, uh, Chicago television sta, stations. She served as Vice President for the National Hispanic Journalists of Chicago Professional Chapter. I believe, Jeanette, you worked for WMAQ, Channel Five, and Univision. My, my, what I remember. Uh, I enjoyed talking to her references, who described your life, um, as very busy when you were in TV production, somewhat chaotic, and both of your references said that people in media are aggressive. Is that true? The apt, uh, description, but said that you had such, yeah, such a great, uh, work ethic and such calm, uh, in dealing with that. She is a graduate of DePaul University with a Bachelor in Arts in Communication Journalism, Master of Business from Saint Xavier University. And my favorite thing about her is I called her the other day, just to chit-chat, and she said, I'm sorry about the noise in the background, she said, "I'm sorry about the noise in the background, I'm picking up some kids." Um, and just having the job as a parent, uh, is, is, you know, gives you an insight in being committed to your, to your own family, uh, I think is, is very important as well.
All right, okay, well, I just need a motion?
Some of.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And welcome, Ms. Castillo. Welcome. We're so pleased that we, to have you. Okay? All right, next we have, let's see, appointments for Director of Foundation and Development.
All right, Angela Adolf, you get to stand up, and you're, you're with somebody. Who are you with, Angela?
My husband, Joe.
All right, Joe, good to see you. So, so Angela, um, has been on the foundation for, how, how many years, Angela? My entire tenure.
Three and a half, yes.
Right, and most recently served as, as Vice President. And when you're in that role, you know, you're an insider, uh, and you say, "Hey, I'm gonna jump into applying for something," you're, you're putting yourself out there, you know, for sure, and we're, we're, we're so glad. She's worked for nonprofits for twenty years. If I listed them all off, this board meeting would get very long, but she's been a board member, Homer thirty-three C, uh, Montessori School of Lamont, uh, she's been a District Two-O-Five, uh, Foundation trustee in Homer Township, um, involved in Lockport, uh, uh, Homer Youth Theater, and, and, and the list goes on. She's been a group, youth group pastor, um, uh, a, as well. Uh, she is very involved in the LTHS Choir Boosters, uh, much like, uh, Mrs. Castillo. Uh, I, my favorite role that I saw her play is, I was at, uh, the play on Friday night, and, and she was running around and marshaling her husband and marshaling her older son who was in from Texas, and her parents, and getting everybody in position to see her oldest son, uh, play a very egotistical, self-absorbed, uh, non-caricature himself, uh, as, as a character. So, uh, you know, here she is, and I think she's gonna do great things, and even before being appointed, uh, by you, she was getting at it with lunch, uh, with Santa, so I think she's got a broad vision, could bring people onto the foundation and really be thoughtful about what the future of the district, uh, could be. Angela Adolf.
All right. All right, just need a motion?
Some of.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Travis, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Welcome, welcome, Ms. Adolf, oh my God. And here I thought, and here I thought I was a busy woman, you're even double more. It's like, I don't know how you do it, but, but welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next we have, let's see, the approval of the tentative levy for the tax year 2021. Just need a motion for that?
Some of.
And I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caniva to approval of the tentative levy for the tax year 2021. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
No.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, next we have a resolution authorizing intervention in proceedings before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board.
And in essence, just a quick mention with your permission, uh, Ms. Lopez Caniva, what this does is it streamlines this process. Uh, there is, there is a process for property tax, uh, appeals. What it, it permits, as your representative, your treasurer, for, for Stephanie Croy to represent you, um, uh, on some of this so that we can be more nimble, quicker decisions, um, and in essence, uh, use her good judgment to settle without greater costs, some of the property tax appeals, uh, that, that we have, um, you know, sometimes before us. Stephanie, I don't know if you want to make any mention of this, or if board members have questions about it?
The only thing I want to mention is, is, it, it wouldn't be only my decision-making, obviously.
Right.
It's based on attorney recommendation, um, which has, you know, this is, this is what those attorneys do for this with, um, and, and it would be my, the, the way that these work typically are, our attorneys work with the other party's attorneys, and, and they come to some kind of agreement, and they go back and forth, and our attorney will ask for authority, and sometimes there's not time to come back to the board for that. And it would be myself and the, um, business manager at, um, our fellow district, Homer Thirty-three C, because we share the attorney bill on intervening on those property tax appeal board cases. So, um, we usually discuss them amongst ourselves and, and make the, the recommendations fair, based on the attorney's recommendation.
Thank you. All right, just need a motion for that? Some of.
Sorry.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. All right, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Hi, I'm confused, what are we voting on?
Um, the resolution authorizing, um, intervention in proceedings before the tax, before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board.
Yes.
In, in essence, um, I understand, okay, yes. Oh, got it.
Okay, all right.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next, uh, we have community service hours for the class of 2022. Just need a motion for that?
Some of.
Sorry.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that?
So we're lower, are we, what, what's the final thing, thirty?
Yeah, my, my recommendation of the board would be that you prorate this to thirty. Um, you know, on one hand, uh, certainly students in this class have known that it's the board's wish that there are forty hours, uh, but in our study of it, you know, we, we, we would have to admit that two years of the four years of this particular class has been impacted by COVID. Also, uh, Mrs. Christopher, and a number of other people, Dr. Green and Grant Furklek have convened a, uh, Brian Lester, a community service hours, uh, committee, it's been doing a number of things, a community service hour week, Martin Luther King Day, Day of Service, uh, to give students opportunities, and we're really, really publicizing, especially opportunities right in the house, just like Gold Card Dinner, um, Kathy Maxwell and Deanna Grigoric did a, did a great job permitting me to go see Porter football, but we couldn't have done it without the army of students who showed up and put volunteer hours, uh, in to have our senior citizens come and pick up a meal, um, for the virtual Gold Card Dinner. Uh, so that seems my recommendation, based on just the data that we have run about where the graduates are right now, that thirty hours rather than forty would be an appropriate proration.
And a month, you, you gave that excellent summary a month ago, right?
Right.
When we went through and we've gone twenty, it was, twenty twenty, we waived, twenty twenty-one, we went down to twenty, now thirty. Back in October, um, less than, I mean, seven hundred students have less than thirty hours a month ago.
Right.
You know, that, you know, with five hundred of them i- in October, as of October, had none, and they've been here for four years. Um, what, how we, how do you feel about at thirty, the percentage you think we're gonna have for, for a hit of that?
Well, I think, um, those numbers are better than where they were in the past years. You can even believe that.
Oh, yes, no, 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 I, I, I totally, that's, that's an improvement.
I, I, I think with the proration, and I think with all the things, you know, I'd like to support, I ask the board to support, um, the efforts of our Community Service Committee on your behalf, really to put out there, here are opportunities. We have a vaccination clinic on behalf of Will County, public health, you know, there are just so many things right here, um, under our roof that we can do, that I, I think we will get a response if there's a proration. And then the vision ultimately, good point, Mr. Ives, is that we do get to a place, just like with any graduation requirement, that students are doing ten years of service every year, so that we're not on this sort of wait till the very last year, because that's not your intention.
Right.
Your intention is people learn the value of service as they go through high school. So we are working towards that.
But, Dr. McBride, it concerned me that we have so many that have none.
It, it concerns me as well, uh, you could, you know, obviously the board could propose more of a proration?
Uh, I'll propose that we have no recommendation whatsoever for student, for student, um, community service hours.
So, Dr. McBride, my question is, um, what did we prorate it to last year? Is it skating?
Uh, last year was twenty.
It was twenty.
Right, so it was half.
We went none, twenty, now it's thirty. And I, and I think the administration did a great job, um, recognizing those, uh, you recognize them at graduation?
At graduation.
Right.
And other, other things, recognizing those that did the forty, um, and, and got, and got to their hours, and some significantly over that, which is always impressive, so I really like the fact that they, you know, they're putting the effort in and they're being recognized for it. It's not just like a check-the-box thing, so I, I do hope we can continue that philosophy.
And my assumption is there's a number of students that probably have hours, but they haven't won them yet.
That is probably the case, um, because we do use this, um, online transaction, transio, so you do have to get on, you have to log it in, um, and then also, you know, opportunities this year that are, that are coming up. Um, you know, with the, the board's expectation in general of community service hours, there's been some muscle that we've put in to create those opportunities for students. There are presently, right now, uh, two hundred and fifteen students who have exceeded, uh, thirty hours. Anyone above that, what we did is we did anyone above your hours, and then anyone above forty, we acknowledged last year. Uh, you know, of course, uh, last year we prorated it to twenty, um, we had far more students who were not, you know, had no service hours, it was closer to seven hundred. Uh, they made it, um, you know, uh, the idea of doing this now, rather than last year, we voted in, I believe, March, would be that there would be a definitive message from you as board members in terms of what you expect for graduation.
And the, and the nice thing, being, being one who's been involved in doing things with having a lot of students do the volunteer hours, it, I choose, though, I mean, I, you know, I, I'd see them as, look, you know, a month's gone by, you said, "You haven't submitted," 'cause you know when they submit, because I, it comes to me, you know, say, you know, confirming that the student really did this, so, you know, it's kind of nice that he can say, "Hey, you know, am I gonna submit those in?" It's been a month now, and finally they, all of a sudden I see them show up, so, but you're right, there's definitely a percentage of, uh, completed but not submitted.
All right, so it's already been motioned and seconded, all I need then is, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next we have the approval of master services agreement with Forward Edge.
And just, this is a very long entry, just want to make a note, uh, Mr. Dusterhoff and Mrs. Croy have worked on this. This is our continued effort to protect, um, our electronic assets in a time when, uh, especially public institutions have come under some of the, the most difficult types of attacks. Uh, so in addition, we have insurance that protects us if we have an attack, uh, this contract with Forward Edge would be a little bit more offensive, trying to get out there and prevent that kind of, um, cyber attack, and enhancing our cybersecurity.
All right, just need a motion for that? And I can second that, so it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caniva. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next we have the approval memorandum of understanding with DLA, the roof replacement project.
And the, the next three items for board members, seven, eight, and nine, are, are really all asked the same of you. Uh, this is our roof project, this is our auditorium project, and what it does is we are commissioning, um, our architects, vendors to, to do the study for, for really what needs to be done. What would the roofing project look like and cost, and specking it out and preparing it to be bid, and then also, similarly, what would we need to modernize, um, the auditorium? So in essence, when, when we commit to this memorandum of understanding, is in general the board committing to those projects.
So the, quick question, so this is the start of the, it, or are we just like trying to gauge how much it's gonna cost?
That's a great question. It, it, we, we're doing both. We're starting it by gauging how much it will cost, but typically, Mr. Navarro, the, the fee is, the fee is significant. It's an investment, and of course, the board could always say, "We're not gonna move back forward with that project," but generally, the fee in doing the kind of deep work to set up bid specifications, uh, it's an investment on the part of the board. So if we invest that, for example, with the roof, all those three, uh, the roof is the most, um, significant, um, fee for our architects, uh, you know, to, to set that aside, the board would really have to have a conversation after doing that memorandum of understanding, getting those bid specifications, there's an investment that you've already made as a board. So just understanding that investment has been, has been made.
All right, just need a motion for that?
Some of.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any further questions? All right, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next we have the approval for the professional services provided by Berg, Berg Engineering Consultants for lighting upgrades in auditorium. All right, just need a motion for that?
Second. Sorry.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and, and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to this? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson? Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Next we have the professional services provided by Threshold for Audio-Visual Upgrades in Auditorium. Just need a motion? I can, I can motion that. Need a second? Who's seconded, I'm sorry, Mr. Travis? Okay. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, next we have the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three nu, new course proposals.
I just take a, uh, you know, obviously Mrs. Christopher's here, and then the members of the curriculum committee are here. Uh, a natural cycle of proposing, uh, courses, and one of the natural cycles that we do with board members is you approve, um, courses, you approve those, those materials in those courses as well. So just, you know, giving a chance for you to take a look at what is being added to Um, so just, you know, giving a chance for you to take a look at what is being added to our curriculum, and really all of them are aligned to goals that we have as a district, and, um, especially in career applications, and really trying to provide, you know, courses that our students need. And, you know, I'm sure Mrs. Christopher can answer any questions or add anything.
Can I just add one thing? I, I propose that the board approve it, but not the level change item, um, because we'd like some further time for other courses to make sure we're in a full alignment if we change a level.
Can you, would, sorry, which, what is that?
That is the world language ones.
Those are the ones that you have a question about?
Doctor Shaw, huh? So approve all others, as Dr. McBride said, they are just, uh, providing capstone experiences. And not that one, so if you could say that.
And that one, so that one will...
So let's remove world language and culture?
Yeah.
So...
That, that level change.
Level change.
How do we do that? Well, someone would have to make a proposal, because what is in front of you approves them all.
So, would you like me to re...
So someone might have to, one of the board members might have to rephrase for the minutes what you are proposing. Um, these are not numbered, um, so I might, I might recommend something like this, that, um, someone moved to propose three D design and animation, architecture two, engineering design two, chemistry instructional, um, college and career applications, and then stop.
So I will motion to approve three D design and animation to arch- architecture two, engineering design two, chemistry instructional, um, college and career applications, however, we're going to strike world language as the cultures.
Or table it.
Or table. Alright, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and by, and seconded by Mr. Travis. Alright, are there any further questions? Alright, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cameva?
Yes. We have no policy considerations. It's moving on to public comments.
Press one oh eight has arrived, so...
Alright, public comments not listed on agenda. The designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak on must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call up speakers by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district expects mutual respectability and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy two colon two three O and Policy eight colon three O. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. And there are... There are none. Okay. Moving on to our information reports, principals' reports.
Good evening, everybody. I'm actually going to call up the super principals, uh, to come up here with me, um, as we are going to give a compass report. And as they are coming up, I just want to say thank you to the board for recognizing the, um, anniversary of Title IX. I've been in this district for twenty-five years, I've coached four different sports. I've had the pleasure to work under Barb Burke, Yvonne Schlatter, Chris Marsilak, and Julie Hudson. And if you're from the Lockport community, you know that those are the women who actually started our sports programs here. And it has been a phenomenal experience, and I've seen thousands of girls positively impacted by what we've done here at LTHS. So thank you for celebrating, uh, Title IX and offering those opportunities. Um, tonight, what John and I wanted to do is, um, do a brief presentation on Compass for you. Uh, we know that you hear Compass all the time, uh, you heard our student government talk about the positives of Compass, and what we wanted to do is just kind of gave you a brief snapshot, snapshot of Compass and what we're doing. And what we've asked is the three people who are responsible for the behind-the-scenes hard work that goes into the planning, the organizing, and the troubleshooting of Compass. So I would love to publicly thank Trish Sermon, Matt Bartley, and John Webberay for all of their hard work in making this a success. Um, we are still rolling through and figuring it out, but they have done a fantastic job of offering opportunities for our kids to connect and to get the assistance that they need and to navigate their high school experience. So I'm going to turn it over to Trish, Matt, and John.
Okay, so all of our students are assigned to a Compass classroom during Compass time. Um, we call it their home port, so everybody has a place to go every day. But we use that time for teachers to be able to pull students out and meet with them to work on things like reteaching a skill that the students are struggling with, giving them, giving them an opportunity for some extra practice or some one-on-one or small groups, group work with the teacher. Students can also use this time for making up a test or getting some homework finished. The idea is that it's an opportunity for teachers to offer some extra help with, for students, but being directional about that as opposed to invitational, right? So instead of saying, come and see me if you think you need some help, teachers are saying, I know you need help, you're going to come and meet with me during this time and we're going to work on this. Our PLCs are working to identify skills, work together to provide that extra help for students. With all of our students scheduled every day, plus teachers creating these additional sections to schedule students to meet with them, we've had over six thousand Compass sessions that have been scheduled, and thirty-six thousand, probably closer to thirty-seven thousand now, meetings with students. Obviously, that's a duplicated number, some students are meeting with multiple teachers during the week. Other students maybe need a little bit less support, so they're not meeting as frequently.
So the students talked to you this time about, we just opened up them, being able to choose where they go a little bit. Obviously, Jen said if they need the help, they'll go in and they'll sign up to go get extra help and things like that, if there's availability. But, um, there's other things going on, and the overall plan is to keep student choice activities growing. So, um, we have a couple of examples to share with you, um, of enrichment, um, projects that are going on via the classroom teachers. So at Central, a cross-curricular activity between foods and STEM classes was developed, and they took two weeks bringing all the kids in together. They developed a cookie cutter, and, uh, STEM class is going to make the cookie cutter with the three D printers. And then the foods classes pick their recipes out and they're going to be making the cookies, and then they're coming together, and everybody gets to share and everybody gets a cookie. So, uh, it'll be really great, and they are LTHS-based, so they're really kind of cute. And they, they really had to do a lot of neat, intricate things to make those cookie cutters really work, so, um, and they're all very much a part of, of it. So they took the Compass time to do those activities and they go back into the classrooms. Here at East, the Spanish four students met with the native, native speakers, and they came together, and, um, the native speakers shared information about their homes, their, their, um, their native home, their native home countries. And then the Spanish four students asked questions about a variety of subjects and, um, including their culture. So it was a great exchange of information and real-life experience for the Spanish four kids to hear about that. In the port, our media centers, uh, they have so many things going on in there. Um, not only do they have areas set up for reading and studying, but they have escape rooms, book discussions, board game days, podcast development, three D printing, and online guest speakers right now. And the list is continuing, they're just keep coming up with more and more things. The dean's office is bringing students in for celebrations, so they're bringing kids in that have really good attendance, um, maybe a student that wasn't doing so great and decided to figure it out and is doing a little bit better. Um, uh, no tardies, things like that. And they also have fun activity days, they've done yoga with Sparlin, um, leading it, by the way, so a little cross-curricular there. And, uh, they did Family Feud, uh, the other day, so that was kind of cool. Um, the guidance office is meeting with students individually and in groups to assist in a variety of ways. Actually, Dr. McBride was a part of the, um, transfer student group meeting during Compass, and they brought them all into the auditorium and they had a really great meeting with those kids. That was just a couple of weeks ago. And, um, finally, the guidance office is also developing a variety of activities for the home port days, um, which Mr. Bartley will be going over.
Yeah, I was going to say, drop the mic, she comes quite, quite, quite a bit there. So the, the last, uh, you know, slide here you're looking at, I know was mentioned earlier in the day, uh, you know, one of the nice benefits of a, a sort of universal period with this Compass is that, um, when we want to reach out to the vast majority of our students, we have this period now. Um, and an example would be on the eleventh, if you were to walk around our school, all of our students would be engaged in the, you know, the beautiful film that we had honoring the LTHS veterans. That was so well-done and well-received by each of the departments and the students, students alike. Um, you know, to, you know, to, to, to go off of that, too, things like safety drills, you know, things that we just need to message across, um, the district, the, uh, home port days could be used for and this Compass period could be used for. Some of the things that you'll see the, the guidance office doing, if you take a look at, we have a beautiful Compass page on our website, if you, you, you click from I'm a Student, um, you know, down to the Compass page, you'll see the dates and some of the things, you're walking around the building, you'll see, um, time management organization. Um, I, I think I'm going to probably try and sit in one of those myself, because i- it's, it's different. I, I mean, the, the, the organization skills, uh, on, on the cyber world is completely different than what you and I grew up with. And it's, you know, i- it's not as easy as you think, um, organizing all of these Google classrooms, these emails, um, and all these documents you're sharing and receiving, so, um, we, we have some, uh, you know, excellent guidance in there. Um, stress management, things that go along with some of our SEL components. Um, I, I see one coming down the line about college visits, you know, how do we take a college visit? What kind of questions do we ask during college visits? So, some of those spaces around our, our, our building being used, we like this room itself, the port, our, our, our new media center, um, and, uh, the maroon room, sometimes the auditorium, where we, uh, you know, can use those extra spaces outside those classrooms where teachers are, you know, um, you know, talking to our students or, or, or working with them stu- the students academically. Um, we're working with them, uh, with the executive functioning skills, you know, social-emotional learning skills, uh, uh, you know, life skills, um, outside of just the academics, so it's really exciting. Someone who has to, you know, look at the facility requests and facility management, I can tell you, our staff is excited. Um, there are, there, there's competition for these spaces to get these things done, so...
Big competition.
And we wanted to just share some photos of some students participating in different activities during Compass. Um, I believe two of these are from the Central Campus and activities over there. Um, some of, of these, we just kind of walked around and snapped last week while students were working. So kids in classrooms, kids in the port, working, um, on fun activities, working on getting some work made up, uh, participating in special things, uh, this happens to be Sarah Stanky's chemistry classroom, and every time you go in there during Compass, it's packed, because kids are in there working on things. So it's, it's just really nice to see students having the opportunity to, to take advantage of some extra time to learn.
And just one thing I would add, and really any board member, uh, Mr. Navara came and just did a walk with me, um, here at East Campus, and we, we, I think we both were having a hard time keeping up with all of the, the variety of things that were going on. You know, and if any board member would like to schedule that with me, if your schedule permits, uh, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words, and also seeing students self-organize, seeing teachers like Mrs. Stanky working with students. Um, and, and what, what might not be so evident is, you know, the power of relationships being built. Uh, because so often we're in a traditional class mode, but in this kind of class mode, um, people are learning responsibility, self-organization, connection with your teacher in a different way, navigating the system, which I would say having two college students right now at the beginning of their college, they are very academically prepared, but it's organizing their lives that's the biggest challenge.
Now, uh, one thing, one thing I, it's a cute, entertaining story, actually, real quick. Um, Dr. McBride and I, we were down in Bloomington at the soccer, um, playoff game, and they won the game. It was in overtime, it was, it's late, it's, it's a long drive, and I don't know if it was a soccer player or the students who were on the field at the time while celebrating, they, one of them said, well, I think I'm going to, to, you know, said, I'm going to be a little late tomorrow, you know, getting to school, and the kid said, I can't be late, I got Compass. So that came up on the, in, in the middle of a sports field. He's getting something to do with either scheduling Compass or something, so it did come up, which I thought was entertaining.
And that's one of the things, the kids really value this time.
They do.
Um, whether it be connecting, collaborating, getting assistant, assistance, or doing some of these enrichment activities. Like, the kids look forward to these, you know, they really, her, awesome things that our staff is putting out. So kudos to our staff and utilizing Compass, you know, to really assist, but also enrich and to connect the kids. It's a great way to do drills, but to do, give them information and make sure that our kids are engaged, but the kids also have choice. And like Bob said, they're figuring out what they need to do and they're organizing themselves. Do you guys have any questions for us for Compass? You know, we appreciate your support, it really truly has been, um, something that we value in a short period of time, and I think that the kids, if anything, they're asking, can we have more time? You know, can we get more of this? Um, but we, uh, I wanted to say thank you to these three that are presenting, because they really did so much behind the scenes to make all of this work. You know, it's, it's not easy to do and to allow thirty-eight hundred kids to go all over the place. Um, you know, we were a little nervous at first, but the kids are doing amazing things and so is our staff. So thank you for the support of Compass.
And I would be mad at myself if I didn't take this opportunity to say these two. I'll just tell you, I've been in plenty of Compass planning meetings, um, you know, designing these lessons during these home port days. So teachers had well-planned out lessons to begin with to get this thing off the ground. These, these two have been the, the anchors planning for that, you know, they really have, so, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Um, just a couple of other things that John and I usually report on, and just wanted to mention that we did have Phil Boyd here last Thursday, which was phenomenal. We have brought him in to work with our staff, past couple of years we've had him work with our student leaders. This year, he added a whole nother level. In the morning, we kind of did fifty students with the initial training for students, and then in the afternoon, he kind of brought it to a next level, almost like a level two student leadership training for our kids that have already been a part of this group. And it is awesome, because we have kids from the four As, from academics, arts, activities, and athletics. And to see them opening up and connecting, and they do a lot of activities where the kids realize that, you know, there's a story behind every child that comes through these doors, that everyone has a story, and it gives a newfound meaning and respect for everyone that is in the room. Um, it, it, it was very powerful and very moving for our kids. And so we're very excited to work with those groups of kids and our leadership, um, groups in the different buildings to really continue to foster, you know, the culture that we want here at LTHS. Because we know as a, a adult community, that we really need the students to shape the, the culture, you know, the climate and culture of this building. So we're very excited and are grateful, uh, that we had Phil Boyd back here with us. Um, activities-wise, our Porter players, they are to be commended for their performance, both live stream and in person last weekend with Hep Hazzle the Ever After, um, that was absolutely phenomenal. And it was great to see the kids back on stage and to have people in the auditorium. NHS is actually bringing in a hundred and ninety-three new members this week, so we're very excited about that. Um, thank you to our world language department, they did a food drive in honoring, um, loved ones that have been lost in, uh, Day of the Dead celebrations. And then also for athletics, i- it has been a phenomenal fall. Cross-country, uh, our boys had one qualifier for state, the girls team qualified the entire team. Uh, girls swimming and diving, we actually had Ellie Fontanetta and Hannah Ostrander make it downstate, and Ellie Fontanetta is a three-time state champ. And so, um, if you know Ellie, she has the biggest smile that will light up the room. Um, we can't say enough about her and are so proud of her achievements, uh, when she's been here at Lockport. Uh, girls tennis had a, uh, doubles team qualify, our girls volleyball program had over thirty-one wins, um, twenty-five game winning streak, which is the longest streak in history. Julie Hudson actually went in her crawl space and got out the record books and confirmed it was the longest winning streak. So that was very exciting, and football, uh, this Saturday at one o'clock, we will take on Loyola. There are four teams left in eight-day football, and hopefully we will be spending Thanksgiving weekend in DeKalb, so... Absolutely, looking forward to it. So go Porters! And then our behavior, um, charts that you saw there, um, it's the same, no ID, tardies, electronic devices, and dress codes kind of lead the charge, uh, but commending our deans and guidance counselors for really working with kids during Compass, not only to do some restorative practices, but to do the celebrations, as I mentioned, as well. And student attendance report in there, you see that we are over ninety-five, almost ninety-six percent. So, thank you to everyone for all of your support and everything that we do.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, Ms. Green, Dr. Green. Alright, next we have the capital project expenditure and inter-fund transfer summaries, you have that there.
And that really is just to keep board members apprised, these are fund transfers to support some of the building projects we're doing, life safety repairs, uh, work we did to finish off the project in the port, the technology offices, and then also the, the memorandum of understanding related to the East Campus roof.
We have the maintenance report from Mr. Bill Thompson.
Once again, a area diet and literate, uh, I'd say almost literature, um, uh, report, but I, I did want to just draw the board's attention to what, uh, Mr. Thompson highlighted about ventilation. And it gets a little thick, I know, in there, uh, but just, uh, our efforts really to improve ventilation, but the, but the... Um, in both of our buildings, particularly here at East, opening our dampers up... In both of our buildings, particularly here at East, opening our dampers up in colder weather to bring that fresh cold air exchange in, but heating that is is quite costly. We are heading into a winter for all of us where we have some inflationary trends. We have purchased a great deal, about 85% of our gas already, but we are going to see those 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 increased costs over the winter, both personally and as a school district. But you can also see the cost embedded in how much more energy we're using in terms of gas to to heat literally the air that we're hanging in because it's it's cooler and it's fresher. I mentioned that it's just a sort of less-than-glamorous piece of dealing with COVID-19 that I'm sure every architect who's gonna build a future school will be looking at, but just our level best to keep fresh air flowing and moving throughout the building. And then you can see we're moving on with the chiller cooling replacement. Crane will be set up, no helicopter on November 24th. That's primarily because school is not in session. Replacing fixtures, Community Wellness Center, and then field repair work in the A fields just, you know, now's the time to get some of that stuff prepped up for spring. Any questions for me or Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. All right, next, moving on to announcements. We have a few announcements there.
Triple I's this weekend. Also, I would just draw the attention to board members to Midwest Clinic on Saturday, December 18th. Midwest Clinic is probably, well, is probably is one of the most prestigious clinics in the world. People from all over the world come to participate in the Midwest Clinic. And so very few bands or orchestras get asked to perform, usually five or six a year. We are in that group. Board members will be hearing more and more about that, but it it it's a spectacular thing, high-quality.
It is.
It's incredible. And then the summer meeting change, and then you've got your financing, facility, and curriculum committee meetings.
Thank you. And then just, yes, I think Kathy did, gave you all the information. There was a separate folder for all your triple I information, so hopefully everyone got that, right?
Right. And then because Saturday, it's, you know, pretty much ad hoc, you can go to the various sessions that you're interested in. I think it would be a good idea that we send what we're interested in going into Saturday. Sometimes they get full, sometimes they not, so Kathy can keep have a list of them, and so we can make the best advantage of our time down there, so we're not, four or five of us are at the same session. We can kind of spread out, you know, and take advantage of that. So I think that'd be a good idea. Board members, if you if you go online and, you know, you got the email today, reminder of what's there, if there's something you're just interested in, let Kathy know, and then Kathy, you could create like a master list for us.
And then you can know who's going where.
Yeah.
You can look on that and then just go and just by, how how late do you want us to send you those things, Kathy? By Wednesday? Wednesday morning?
I think probably Wednesday, right?
Wednesday morning?
Maybe Wednesday, noon Wednesday?
Noon Wednesday.
And I I could include sessions that you're gonna go to, I think, Dick, you're saying sessions that you're gonna go to on Saturday?
Because we already know it was on Friday what what people are doing in the pre-session.
And then I could I could include them in your weekly update.
I know, yeah. Right, no, no, I understand that, but at least we could, logistically, you can say, okay, we've got, you know, 10:30 session, and four of us are going to the same one. Would be better va- more valuable if we spread out because, as you all remember, we have to give, each of us have to give our reports of what we attended while we're there, so.
True. And that will be on December 13th.
Yes, it will be December 13th.
Okay. All right.
I need these.
Yes.
I can give you mine.
Yep, if you have to turn it in valid.
I have mine here, okay?
You got mine.
I think I gave you yours.
Yes, yeah, can do it.
I have mine, that's right.
Yes. All right, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Mr. Travis to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Very much.
Thank you.
That's what I I I was...